Keep going.
You know, just off the top of my head, like the first thing that just comes to mind and I'm just talking and brainstorming is, is there some way to help promote our local businesses better? And in what is that? I mean, is it a interactive type map? Is it an app? Is it a, I don't know, some more things on the streets? Is it more things in our local businesses that say, here's where you can go for this? Now, we try a lot of those things, but we don't all know what those are. So I mean, that's just the first thing that pops into my head.
Perfect.
Because I can tell you that there's a lot of people that don't know that Bremmer Bank is on that corner. Like, they know other maybe financial institutions because of size, but they may not know Bremmer because of it's it's smaller in structure. So, yep.
You mean larger building for banks? No.
Yeah. Well, I'll advocate for that, but I don't know if I wish so.
No, I actually have a comment that would tie right into that. I think that you're right on with owning a small business. I, and I've only been a part of the one on the community for the last couple of years. So it's been fun to kind of get to know the downtown area. But I would love to see like some additional communication for community events. Because I don't always think, you know, I, I would be involved in literally everything. I'm such a yes person, but I know about it after the fact. You know, so like, how can we communicate with all the small businesses who want to be involved with more? So that they can kind of jump on board. I think that goes with the small business promotion idea. And just in general, I, um, other communities that I've been involved with have more community events that are kind of better promoted.
So are we talking almost a downtown event? Um, promotion organization, a downtown business promotion or organization, something similar to that type of things? What you're kind of envisioning?
Or a small business communication type avenue? Where you kind of know when, when things are going on. There's probably a Facebook page for it that I haven't found yet.
Yeah, I know that the, the Chamber does some of that, but, but I found that it's last minute, you know, when things are happening and you find out about it, you know, the week before or the week of. And it's hard to plan or to, you know, involve yourself in it.
If you're not a member, you don't get the communication, which is what I have found as well. If some things that we've tried promoting through the Chamber, you're not a member, you may not get that same.
Exactly, yeah.
One thing that I really love about having a business downtown, and we had looked about moving out of downtown a couple of years ago. Is, is just the fact that I can walk everywhere. I can walk to do a bank deposit or to give change. I can walk to the post office. I can walk to get somewhere to eat a lunch. And, and so all of the things that I need really to operate are right downtown. With the one exception of office supplies. And that's something that, um, that I find, you know, if it's not at Walmart, it's nowhere. Um, and, and so anything that is a little bit specialty is really hard. And I, and I hate having to do Amazon. Um, but I found myself like making a special trip to La Crosse just to buy an office supply thing that I just can't find in the community. But for the most part, um, I, I love just the proximity of everything.
It's a really good point, though, and probably something that's often overlooked. So that's actually really, really great to dig into. I'm gonna circle slightly back to event space because I know that Visit Winona does a lot of promotion, particularly, but you're particularly geared toward external customers more than internal customers. Do you see that there's a potential for collaboration? Or have you been hearing the similar, I'm not gonna say lament, but the similar comments? Before Mary, any insight you can give us from Visit Winona side?
Yeah, when I hear that, I'm like, whoa, that's too bad.
I know, but that's.
We do our banking, we have the word and, and we definitely are, you know, our, our work is to promote many people to come here and to visit. But we certainly do, um, uh, our best to include local, our local residents as well. And we do have resources and, you know, it was wonderful this weekend when I, everything got me pretty much for the weekend. When our every Monday we send that out and our website is full of events and, and other resources. So, um, anything we can, we can put you into, we'd be more than happy to make sure that you're aware of. Like, did you know Sweet Stole's going on today?
Yeah, I don't even know.
Right now, Sweet Stole is going on until five o'clock. It's downtown, the, the, the Main Street program is putting on and businesses are offering sweet treats and discounts and.
Well, exactly what I do. I did your crazy days was going on.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, I, I really, you know, really, we do want to include everyone in our main visions, um, you know, so that people know what they can do in Winona at any given day, so.
I think I mentioned, I don't mean to take us off track, but I mentioned that kind of at our last meeting. It's that was something that I had referenced is that we have a lot of great organizations that are doing a lot of great things, whether it's Chamber, you know, you got everybody, but it's pulling it all together so that people like you know what's happening. Because somehow it's not getting to everybody, even though we have all these great things. So I don't know if that's communication or a single source, or I'm not sure.
I remember I wrote down communication, 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 probably four or five times in our last meeting. And I think it's a really common refrain across this entire process is there's always more and more need for that communication element. So I know that we're still kind of in this introduction phase here. I do wanna go chapter by chapter a little bit, but Chad. Oh, Rahel, you have your hand up and I completely ignored you. I'm so sorry. How can, how can we help you?
No worries. Um, I actually just had a few questions because, um, as a university or a former university student, I feel like sometimes we're like secluded almost because we're in our like own little respective world. But, um, how are we gonna relay this back to those members of the community? Cause I know that a lot of times, um, students do not hear about these community events and we don't participate because we don't know about them. And I wanna know how we can, I don't know, maybe reach out to them more and maybe extend that to them.
I don't know that I have a perfect answer for you right now, but it's definitely something that we need to work on. I mean, it's an identified need for sure. Absolutely. And thanks for highlighting it.
Yeah, I just wanna echo that. That's a huge one. I think one example is Midwest Music Fest. I remember, um, reading that it was purposely, you know, uh, scheduled to be during the school year so that students could attend. But then I found out, uh, you know, just before the event, that that was during finals week, uh, which made it much harder for students to actually attend despite it being during the school year technically. Um, so I think that kind of interaction is a very good idea.
Great, great. You know, it's interesting. So we're, we're talking about this and I, I wanna highlight this next section here just briefly. Is that even in the barriers and challenges, what we don't actually recognize in this downtown strategic plan is this communication element. It didn't come off as a barrier or challenge, but it's something that we know is, is lurking beneath the surface of this plan at least. And maybe it's something we need to call out more clearly in that, in the comprehensive plan and direct the strategic plan to really update. Um, some of the things that are a bit more priority focused here are things like green space and beautification of downtown night and weekend activities. Um, and incentivizing improvements to buildings. So we were talking briefly about that with Amber, talking about, you know, having a nice building or development. But really, these are things that the city acts as a foundational platform sometimes, not less, less so the downtown beautification slash green space. But how do we make it? How do we make an incentive for building owners or for residents of downtown to really feel like they can take it upon themselves to beautify their storefront or beautify the sidewalk outside of it? Are there any barriers or anything else that you feel in that regard? I know Erin, with Great River Shakespeare Festival, you all have put out flowers before in the past. Um, you've been working to kind of do that and update that. Did you feel like you were supported or that you had the freedom to do that? I know we loosened, we loosened the rules a little bit during COVID, um, before that. But I think maybe you could provide some insight on process in that regard. Um, so that we can get it on record and make sure we put it in the comp plan perhaps.
Yeah, you know, the, the only thing that we encountered is when we moved from our site on the corner, we didn't realize that the, the permit, you know, because none of us were around when the permit got done. But there was a permit that was done to allow us to have sidewalk signs and planters. And we didn't realize that that, you know, was locked into that property. And so when we moved to our new place, you know, we found out that we didn't have that. And so we just came to you and said, you know, hey, we'd like to do this and you guys were really good. And whether it's permitted or whether you just look the other way, it's, it's been appreciated. Um, because it's allowed us to put, put signs out and, and the, and the flowers out. And I, I, I think people like it, except we gather lots of cobwebs that I can, and dropped petals that I haven't swept away recently. But, um, but the city was super easy to work with. I don't know if that is because we're a nonprofit, if it's, or if it's that way for all of the downtown retailers. But, but I felt like I could easily express my need and, and it was addressed.
Do you feel like the process was a little bit opaque though, and it needed to be clearer in advance? Um, or do you feel like there shouldn't even necessarily be that barrier to entry question? Question, because we all know you, Erin.
Yeah, no, the thing that, that I got struck by was, and, and the city waved it or looked the other way was the fee. Um, and, and if I, I don't know if it was because I was a nonprofit or whether it was honoring the prior agreement and just transferring into the new property. But if I was a new business owner, it would be onerous to have a fee just to put the flowers out.
What was the fee?
I can't remember. It was something per year or per month. I can't remember, but I was like, oh.
So you can't put flowers on the street on your, in front of your building?
We have a thirty-five dollar per year sidewalk sign permit. Um, and I think roughly, probably if we did a reassessment of that, only about fifty percent of businesses that put out sidewalk signs probably aren't even aware of that.
Sure.
Um, I didn't realize it was that low. Thirty-five dollars I could do.
But you do have to go through that hurdle and that too. So we're talking about, you know, how can we make it easier for you as downtown providers to, to go out and do those things? We all know where Bremmer Bank is if you all have balloons and beautiful signs out on the corner.
Yeah, right. But I'd have to pay for that.
Thirty-five dollars, that's exactly right. So if, any other thoughts related to kind of ease of access and this element of how we can perform as a platform to support downtown investment and downtown innovation, really, and even small things like putting flowers out is innovation for many people. Or, or no gift at home, putting out their different, or their little parlet over here.
The History Center just started putting out two beautiful past, wow, they're beautiful and it makes such a difference. It's a welcoming, you know.
And the sign, this, the sidewalk sign wars are, I think are so fun.
Yeah.
You know, the different retailers that call out the other retailers or, you know, I, I think people have been super creative as I walk up and down the sidewalk. It's, it's amusing, uh, to, to walk down third streets and see the different signs.
All right, I do wanna turn our attention to these different goals that we have, kind of supporting an overall vision. And this vision that we really took, that we created for the downtown strategic plan is that downtown Winona is the heart of the community and region where residents and visitors comfortably congregate, recreate and celebrate the arts. Our historic downtown will continue to evolve as an even more beautiful and exciting place to live and work and celebrate new ideas in both historically preserved and dynamically modern settings. And most of you said, it kind of indicated that this type of, or this overall plan really kind of resonated with you. And I feel like that vision probably resonates with most of us. I'm seeing some head nods. Does anybody really have an issue with that? One of the key reasons why we created this subcommittee is because, particularly because the historic downtown and its built environment and its fine-grained urbanism was called out as one of the key elements that people love about Winona in our case one engagement. So I'm reading the room. People seem to feel really comfortable with that. So if we look over at the goals on the right-hand side, we're looking at those first seven goals. And we've seen take such to beautify and enhance, strengthen downtown Winona's sense of place, make sound infrastructure improvements. Those first three in particular, you know, we don't really necessarily call out as a specific streetscaping plan. Our last streetscaping plan was updated in two thousand and fifteen, so seven years ago. Do you feel that we have cohesive streetscaping signage investments in downtown's beauty and beautification? How does the subcommittee view those elements?
Say that again.
Do you feel that there's a cohesive branding basically for our beautification us, um, elements? And I want this to go all the way down to, do the streets feel like they're walkable and approachable? Do our curb ramps feel that way? Do our intersections feel easy to navigate? When Erin is, is walking downtown to go drop off a check, she feel really comfortable doing that? I wanna hear from this group how that resonates with you through those goals.
So that's a, um, decent, could definitely be a lot better. You know, I noticed some cohesion, some signage, um, that's nice. Um, but I think, you know, there's a lot more that could definitely be done. Um, some more that should be done and be a, a lot more that could really add a whole lot to it.
I walk downtown with my young family often and, um, so my two older kids, they ride their bikes down the sidewalk, which terrifies me because of all the alleys and, you know, you don't know who's paying attention in their vehicles. And so I think definitely there could be some improvement with, with that mentality of small humans. Because I think as a grown adult, you know, I'm comfortable walking downtown. When I bring my kids, we have to be a lot more aware of everything.
Just, uh, because my mother-in-law lived with us, um, we, uh, and she was wheelchair bound. Um, we noticed that there's improvements being made, um, but the curb cuts, sometimes they go into the, um, the crosswalk, then sometimes they point into the center of the street. Um, and so when we have, you know, a developmentally delayed adult pushing a wheelchair, and, and you go into the middle of the street and then have to turn to get into the lane. Um, that's always been a little nerve-wracking. And the other thing that I, you know, I, I love the accessibility on the sidewalk and how there've been adaptations made. And I think along, um, Center Street, you know, in front of like, uh, WA group and in front of, uh, the choke building. Um, there's, there's ramps and, and things that are built in. Um, but if, you know, I, my mother-in-law was blind and she was in a wheelchair. But if she wasn't in a wheelchair, I just think about how odd that you're walking on the sidewalk and all of a sudden you don't realize it. But you have now gone up and you have some steps that you have coming up. And, and it's, it's just kind of alarming, um, some of the changes of the sidewalk that happened that I think are, are good for accessibility, but if you weren't paying attention, I think people could trip up and, and end up at the bottom of the staircase. Rather easily.
Rahel, we haven't heard from you in a while. I see your hand up. How can we help?
Um, one of the things that comes to mind for me is safety, especially, um, at night in Winona, seeing that a lot of the streets don't have streetlights. And I know, um, a lot of the eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds that are at these music festivals or, or attending, um, nighttime events in downtown Winona. Um, I, it just scares me a little bit because sometimes it can seem unsafe that we don't have streetlights when people are walking home, especially, um, walking from downtown to, um, like down Huff over to the university. So I think that's one of the, the things that comes to mind for me.
I would completely agree with that. After moving here from Minneapolis, I felt, um, certainly at first much less safe here because of the lack of, uh, of lighting of, you know, obviously people in business, but that's harder to change. Um, but lighting, you know, security and things like that. Yeah, certainly.
This kind of bleeds into our next couple of goals here. We already, we've already started talking about safety, but also infill development, so the best use of land. And then also this perception of a parking problem, this perception that, you know, we have, we, we need more parking lots, but would they go underutilized, for example? So, um, you know, parking lots, they often create a barrier for people and they make uncomfortable areas for people to walk and they make people feel unsafe. And we, and we know that, of course. Um, but, and you're, you're reinforcing those types of things. Uh, I wanna touch a little bit on recent development and downtown infill development. So we've had some recent larger scale projects, most notably Fastenal's new building, the main square building. We're also seeing reinvestment in places like one of two Walnut and the Lumber Exchange Building. Those buildings are all built right up to the lot lines. They take a great use of the overall space. There isn't a lot of parking associated with them necessarily. Are those feeling like the types of investment and redevelopment that we should continue to be encouraging in our community? I'm seeing a head nod back there. Any comments to add?
Yeah, so I live a block away from the Main Street development. And at first I was, uh, nervous because, you know, we have a neighborhood-ish type of, um, block. And right next to us was gonna be this big, huge apartment complex. But it's been, uh, reinvigorating, I think. And it's just another place for us to go visit, explore, go to the, um, Italian restaurant. So I think once I got over my personal fear, it was really a great addition to the downtown.
Do you feel that that was communicated well to you, that this idea that reinvesting in vacant lots was going to be, um, a great? You're already shaking, I don't even have a question. So we can do a better job of communicating why reinvestment matters, right?
Whatever. And another really good example is the old middle school auditorium that just got torn down, also in my, my neighborhood. And I had to do a lot of research to figure out what are they putting at the end of my street? And how is that gonna impact, you know, my resale value on my home? Um, and now that I know what's happening, great, but up until I found that out for myself by doing research, it was terrible.
And would you say you're more satisfied that it's gonna be a destination place rather than a parking lot?
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I do think though that the, like, the infrastructure of the streets in that general vicinity needs to be addressed to account for like additional traffic from all these new developments. Um, the, there's potfalls everywhere, you know, not good signage, things like that. So I think that, that that needs to be taken into consideration when we have all of these, you know, increased amounts of traffic.
Any other comments on reinvestment in downtown? I know you're keeping your eye on the clock, Chad.
I got, I got, all right. One just quick comment, and I don't, certainly I don't wanna put words in your mouth. But in the whole communication thing that, or the whole communication theme that we continue to hear in all the subcommittees, I think one important piece to note is that, you know, I think of the old middle school auditorium. That project is at least fifteen years in the making and I wonder also if it's, it, it's us sort of forgetting that we probably need to continue to update the community no matter, you know, you may be coming new to this community and you don't know the ten-year history on middle school auditorium. And then maybe sometimes we fall into complacency of, everybody must know about the middle school, we've been talking about it for fifteen years. But clearly, and just this is, it's a, so. And again, I'll be filtering in and out, so I appreciate you looking this to, sort of run the committee.
That's your time, Chad.
Yeah, um, so talking about parking specifically, um, I'm not sure if it addresses your investment question much. But to me, um, filling in downtown is absolutely, you know, something I'd love to see. That some of you have grown up in Minneapolis, I absolutely saw, I remember as a kid looking at, um, aerial pictures of downtown and just walking down there and seeing all the surface parking lots and they just look bleak and depressing. You go downtown now, um, and it's pretty packed in, um, with, you know, especially with apartment buildings. And it adds so much to downtown Minneapolis, um, even at a pretty tough time for Minneapolis. Um, I think about that a lot around Winona and I also, you know, especially downtown. And then also I have heard and can hear in my head people's objections to parking issues. So it's something that I certainly think about a lot. Um, and the only, I mean, I guess two things I have to say is I want as much surface parking built in as possible, not a big fan of it. Um, and I'd like to, I'd like to see transportation to downtown and reframe them as much as possible. Seems like there's a lot of assumption, like, of driving, that cars are the default. Uh, so even when we talk about parking, we're talking about losing parking, how many parking spaces do we have? You know, um, I think it's important to bring bike parking into that, you know? Yeah, maybe we have a hundred parking spaces, but how many bike racks do we have, uh, easily accessible to the main parts of downtown? How good is that signage to let people know where to go to walk downtown? How good are those, you know, intersections across the streets to get into the core of downtown? Um, are there places for people to sit, you know, and meet up, you know, outside when they first get to downtown? Um, and I think, thinking a lot more about, you know, other transportation options in downtown is important to me. And hopefully to others.
I'm hearing a lot of agreement from the, from this group, so yeah, Mary.
So I notice now where the parking lot, where the Y was in the parking lot and how the landscaping was going on there is really quite lovely.
It makes it so hard to do.
And if that's an intent, if that's a city thing that they're required now to do, but obviously I'm impressed with that, that whole corner there.
Yeah, we require decorative fencing or landscaping and natural screening now. So yeah, that is a change. First is the parking lot across the street by Midtown, which is a public lot, which is just cars right up into the sidewalk sometimes. You know, it's not desirable.
Right, but no, it's looking.
But I'm glad you said that going right up the border aspect, um, and, and the beautification is something I was thinking about when you were talking about, um, possible new parking ramp, um, down by Huff and Sarnia. Yeah, in, in my view, you know, some of the parking camps I've seen in my life, some are terribly ugly and I can see what people might object. Some can be pretty beautifully done. And if you're gonna back that up off of the, you know, right off the sidewalk a little bit, add some landscaping, maybe some benches to sit on, some bike racks right there, you know, bus shelter or even just a shelter to stand out of the rain. Um, I think you can make that a feature, you know, instead of an eyesore.
Yeah.
And not just in that location, but many places.
It does also introduce complexity though. So I used to work downtown La Crosse and the parking ramp, often on a Monday morning when we get to work, there would be vomit in the stairwell and, uh, you know, just all sorts of things from weekend events. Um, and so that introduces, you know, more security questions. Um, I personally don't like going in the parking garages by myself because I also grew up in Minneapolis and it scares me. Um, but yeah, just like a parking ramp, I am fully in support of because there's too much black paint right here. But what else do we need to consider if we have a parking ramp?
And, you know, when we were talking about safety before, I was thinking about that as well, parking ramps are, you know, kinda scary.
Rahel, do you wanna chime in?
Yeah, so, um, one of the questions I think I have is like, are these parking locations gonna be strategically placed? Like, are they going to be in places where people can utilize them? Cause there are some, um, some options for parking that I've seen in Winona where it's not being utilized because it's an area that people are not going. Like, people do not wanna park there because, oh, it's further away from this area or it's further away from that area. So are these places going to be strategically placed? Are we gonna have options? Are we gonna survey? Like, are those things that are gonna go into this?
That's a really great point. So, so many of these things, I'm glad that we're going through the introduction here because some of these things are just parts of other components of this plan. And I do wanna highlight some of the parking elements here, um, as we go down into the parking management section because, uh, there really is a lot to just, oh, that's opportunity, excuse me. You know, when we look at our parking utilization and these are the midday counts, these are not, these are the most active moments of the day. You'll know that places like lot number nine, uh, we'd never have more than ten cars there, even though there's about a hundred spaces. There's like ninety-six spaces there. And the common refrain and complaint that we have is for lighting, for sidewalk access, right? Why would I park there when I can just go find a parking space?
Was that one that, that one?
It's up here lot number nine.
A walnut and.
It's right next to Levy Park.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so you'll see that we only have a few lots that are over eighty percent. And you'll, um, to note, good parking management practice is to always make sure that there's just one or two open spaces. So the idea is you dynamically price or dynamically place your parking in a way so that there's always room for that next person necessarily. But then you push people to other parking locations so that you know that you can, you can just have a good mix. You wanna turn the parking spaces like tables at a restaurant, right? Uh, making sure that you have lots of people, otherwise it just becomes car storage, which is the complaint around the Winona State University area, right? It's that you have students who bring their cars and they never move because they got that primo parking spot and it's been five weeks. And you know it hasn't moved because the last storm was five weeks ago. It's boring to the snow on top. Yeah, exactly right. So, so as we do talk about these things, and I, I do wanna kind of go chapter by chapter. I know that we only have twenty-five minutes left because we've had good conversation. But these first seven goals that are in the introduction are really what are resonating. And what we want these subcommittees to look at is overarching goals and objectives, right? Because these strategies can always shift. And so as long as these goals and objectives are ringing, are ringing true, which it sounds like they are, you know, we feel like we're in a pretty good spot, right? Um, so I do wanna, I'm gonna pop right back up in this document, back up to that introduction area. Does anybody have any other further comments on reinvestment before we jump into, um, jump into the next section?
I just, I just wanted to comment about the, the picture because they're working on upper floors. And I know that we have some upper floors that are being well managed. There's, uh, you know, a fair number of Airbnb downtown that people enjoy staying at. Um, but there's. Um, but there's a a lot of upper floors that are not being used and are in disrepair and. And and I would say if there was any way that those could be enlivened, you know, if it's. Lessening the parking regulations or whatnot, so that the landlords have an incentive. To be able to get people into those upper floors, it would be nice. We don't have a second floor, but. No, it's just kind of a false thing. But I know, you know, above the, um, above. Alley's and above the music stop. Shop, you know, there's great space, but it doesn't, it's not built out to be able to accommodate any type of living. Um, but you know, if if there's things that we can do to incentivize that. It will just make the block even even more lively with with activity.
And accessibility might be part of that barrier too, so incentivizing helping the accessibility. So people can utilize those spaces, that would be great.
That's a really good point.
Got that in our building too, we've got an upper floor that would be absolutely gorgeous to be ten million different things and they're. Trying to figure out what they can possibly do with it, but there's a lot of barriers, so.
Like what kind of barriers?
Um, well, we have an elevator, but getting it to be per code, I think is one of the big barriers. The other is fire safety. You know, there has to be. There's a line between maintaining, you know, the integrity of these historic buildings and then also be. It is, it's very expensive, so you know, supporting these building owners to to do some of that stuff.
Yeah, I know there's at least one other building, um. Reconstruct or rehabilitation that's going on and they'd love to do the upper stories, but it's. Fifty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make the elevator serviceable, right? And so therefore, without that, they can't meet fair housing, um, or. Fair housing standards in terms of having that first floor of housing be accessible, which is really a problem, uh, for a lot of our downtown buildings.
There are places though, it seems like it's working well, like, you know, above home and community options. Um, you know, that area when you walk the alley that's behind there, you know, that looks like a really beautiful. Place, you know, the doors are well kept, there's, you know, rope lighting on the stairs, um. So it doesn't just look like a rickety old fire escape, you know, it looks like, oh, this is an inviting place, there's a nice porch. And and so somebody's doing it in an attractive way and. I'd love to find out how they did it and, you know, what what encouraged them to do that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Alright, I'm gonna scroll on down, so these have priority evaluation criteria, so. How are we measuring what we're proposing? And so these next sections have more specific strategies for the different elements, things like. Are we bringing more people to downtown? Are we meeting the environmental and sustainability goals for the community, which we have a sustainability plan that's slated to be adopted in the next few weeks? So those goals are still being discussed. Um, and we also are gonna have an environmental committee for the top plan too, so just be aware that some of this is influx as well. Uh, enabling and enabling accessibility and inclusivity like we were just discussing about, and then engaging people to lead planning, design, function, action, and ongoing operations. So those types of things, you know, like keep in mind as we're as we're talking through this overall plan. So if we look at cleaning and beautification, some of the initiatives that we have here are things that we've already begun talking about, things like incentivizing investment in historic and in historic, um, buildings. Greening up the downtown, um, we've talked a little bit about encouraging compliance, so things like our cuts up to code, for example. Um, and then other things that we haven't really talked about so much like greening up downtown, so. Things like making sure that we have, um, trees that are being replaced appropriately when we do take them down. Elements like how do we have linear park spaces that connect into Levy Park and then maybe even all the way down to the lakes or at least down to Winona State's Arboretum Campus. Those are elements of the Park of Recreation Plan that I think probably would be good fits here in the downtown plan as well. But what are your perspectives on trying to bring more green into downtown?
Sounds great.
It can be as simple as that, sounds great. You feel really good about that, that's great.
I I I love the hanging hanging baskets that happen around town and. Uh, I lived in a community where they asked different individuals and businesses to sponsor those and they just hung a little plaque under it. As a way to defray the cost or to maybe expand that into other areas of the community to to make it throughout downtown. But I I think that's a beautiful program.
I wanna combine two of these elements, so winter time events and then also using public space for events, I think. Many people appreciate all the different festivals and different events that we have downtown in our public rights of way, for example, swinging in the streets just recently was a huge hit. People love dying out downtown, the spill over from the beer garden is usually pretty encouraged by most people. But how do we get that type of element in the winter time? You know, oftentimes Winona almost feels like a summertime town in that regard. I maybe I shouldn't say that out loud, but I'm getting some head nods, so I feel okay about it. Are there any thoughts related to, anyway, we wanna reinforce that goal seems to be the gist based on the head nods, but any thoughts on how we can maybe potentially help make that happen?
Well, I look at historic photographs of of the lights, you know, that bridged over Third Street. And, you know, having, you know, a downtown lights program is something that. You know, makes people feel one safer, but also it's it becomes a destination in the winter.
That's good. Mary, anything you wanna add? We haven't heard your voice in a while, so I wanna call you out for that.
We're talking about winter.
Yes, correct.
I mean, I, there was that, again, that live at the levy that we had over, you know, the Christmas market live at the levy, which really was a. Successful. Downtown, um, event.
The ice skating rink get a lot of traction.
I'm not certain that it did, I I couldn't give you a number though.
I don't know that that was well communicated. I would have used it, I didn't know it was.
We put an ice rink on the levy patio. Two years in a row for, I think, three years ago was maybe the first one. Yeah, I think we had an issue with this last year. Rahel, I see that your hand is raised as well. Do you wanna go ahead and weigh in?
Yeah, maybe doing like, um, a community survey, seeing what people want to see in the wintertime so we can utilize some of the, um. Indoor spaces as well as outdoor spaces and also communicating that well with the community, I think. There, especially with like the change in technology and stuff, I think it's really important for us to, um. To contact people or to get the word out there on social media. Um, cause sometimes I feel like, um, the way that I find out things in Winona like that are happening. Are by word of mouth instead of like actually seeing flyers and stuff. So maybe just getting the word out about these events as well as seeing what people want to see in the community.
I still think too, I just overall, um. You know, just continually improving the look of downtown. I think just whether it's summer or winter, I think that.
Make it inviting.
Yeah, it just needs to be more. Inviting in terms of, um. Keeping sidewalks clean, keeping windows clean, you know, adding. Flowers, but I just still think that there's ways to go to kind of feel like. Downtown is a, yeah, inviting.
Yeah, I think, um, so I had three thoughts on this one, because I think it's a great question that I had not thought of before, I think. The basics, you know, good lighting, more park space, even when it's small. Um, you know, like we're talking about linear parks or, you know, things like hanging baskets, you know, something similar, more vegetation, greenery in the winter. Um, you know, can absolutely make a big difference. Um, I think there's also, you know, um. The fact that, yeah, sometimes, you know, we might think that people won't do anything, but, you know, if there are outdoor spaces, if there are, you know, events. People might surprise you, you know, especially being in Minnesota, we're generally pretty used to being out in the cold. Um, you know, uh, Island City had their fire pits going pretty much all winter. Um, and I've spent a few cold nights, you know, stoking the fire out there and really enjoying it. Um, and then just to get rolling on brainstorming for events, because I've not thought of it at all, but, um. You know, snowboarding is something I really enjoy, and I've seen a couple of places do, uh, little urban rail jams. So like at the Student Union Madison, they did one up in Duluth behind a brewery. Just, um, just setting up a little slope and then some rails, so you, you know, slide down the slope and then slide over the rail and do some tricks. Really simple, you can set it up, you know, in an urban environment. Doesn't take a lot of work, but it's something for people to gather and do and watch and be a part of.
And I think when when we're thinking in terms of the wintertime to get, kind of get back to that, like. Um, you know, we think of Winona as being so attractive during the summer, wintertime, it's hard to make. Your environment attractive in a downtown area, you know, it's it's dirty, it's slushy. We're trying to work on snow removal and figure out where to put stuff, but if we can think of more in terms of what to do versus make it attractive in the winter, you know, there's. There's a lot of communities that hold, this is a really active community, and I think like the active people are really drawn towards the lakes. We're thinking of bringing people downtown, we need to think of maybe even bringing some of those active things downtown, like what you're saying, I. There's places that sponsor like hot chocolate, five Ks, and you know, that that would be such a cool way to get the businesses involved and get the downtown area really seen. And instead of posting it out by the lake, host it in the downtown streets or block off the city street and something like that.
And I think that's a great example, people doing stuff in the winter that might surprise them.
Like those ice bars.
There's, um, you know, we like to go to holiday markets, um, and so we go to these old towns in Wisconsin that have that have got them. And I I know that they tried that here, but it was like for a day. Um, and, you know, to do something for a week long, so it has time for people to be aware of it and and to do something like in Levy Park. Where people have a, you know, kind of a place that they can stroll in nature. Um, rather than just being in, you know, in the actual entry to the park, but into the park. Um, and another thing that I saw last winter that that floored me was this, uh. Uh, golfing range that they had set up, uh, in, um. In Lake City, um, on the lake, um, and that they had drilled the holes for the, the. Golf balls to go in and they had, you know, lanes cleared, and so it was like a little putt putt golf course out on the frozen river, which I thought was. Kind of a a fun, unique thing that, you know, there's that type of activity or, you know, like a mini skiing thing. Things to reinforce and get people downtown and then people might use the ring.
You immediately make me think of a mini putt course that's just in the middle of Third Street, like eighteen holes the entire way. I mean, gosh, that'd be great. Not that we have to do that, of course. So I, oh, Rahel, go ahead.
Um, I know that. We're we're talking more about like winter, but I was thinking more fall as well. Cause I don't really know a lot of events and things that go on during the fall in Winona besides like some Halloween events on Third Street. But I think it would be really cool if we utilize downtown for like fall themed events, especially seeing that. A lot of the students as well as, um, alum like to come down for like football games or like warrior experience and stuff like that. But I think it would be nice if we utilize the downtown and try to do like little cute events, like maybe like pumpkin carving in downtown. Or maybe, um, getting some of the local stores involved in that and try to bring traction that way. Especially because I feel like Winona is a sight to see during the fall. I think it's one of the most beautiful times here, so I think that would be really cool to kind of, um. Incorporate, but I also don't really know, um, a lot of the events that we do have. In the fall, so we might already have that, it might just be a a communication thing.
Um, we actually don't have anybody from that, but we can continue to communicate and, um, of course.
I have a quick question for Rahel about that communication. Um, Rahel, how much do you think students generally know about the festivals that happen during the summer here?
Very few, I would say, um, I personally had stayed here for two summers. And the only reason that I know about the events that are going on is because, um, of community members that I know. So like I know a lot of people that have lived in Winona for many years and they know about community events, so they will let me know when something's happening. But other students think Winona, like there's nothing really going on in Winona, or they just don't see it, or they're, they miss it. So they don't end up staying here because they think there's nothing going on. So I think, um, if more students knew about these events or utilized different spaces, especially in downtown. Um, I think more students would stay over the summer and just stay in Winona in general.
That's kind of what I expected.
And then they become future residents. You put the nail on the head, perfect. Um, okay, so we are, we do have at least one more section I wanna get through, and that's the next section on place making, and I know that we're just trying to tackle these summaries. I do wanna take a brief moment before we approach close to four thirty to check in on our next meeting date. So if we all take a look at our calendars, I'm hoping to schedule this really just two weeks out onto the twenty-eighth would be ideal. Uh, because we are entering the period in August, so we're creating these golden objectives. Which will reinforce probably a lot of the elements that are already in the downtown strategic plan. Does the twenty-eighth around three thirty work for most of the people here?
Work with the walks that you you know that earlier.
Oh, that is a good point. Let me double check when that is. Okay, well, we're having quite a people. How about elsewhere in that week, the twenty-ninth or the twenty-seventh work?
Twenty-seventh works.
Twenty-seven, three thirty? Getting some thumbs up. Rahel, how does that look for you?
Um, that is looking.
Alright, we'll plan on the twenty-seventh at three thirty. But I don't wanna end just yet here today, I do wanna move into our place making section, so this is the summary for place making. And we've already been touching on some of these elements, I wanna keep the conversation going a little bit. Things like creating a mix of destinations to make downtown one large destination. We've already been talking about events for those those types of things, creating more activity during nights and weekends. Or maybe we might even change that to underserved times, right, to things like fall, things like, uh, like winter. Um, evaluating design standards, so we were just talking briefly about how some parking lots are already looking better. But what other things do we need to really talk about when we have a street project, for example? Are there ways for us to say, hey, we're making a thirty or forty year investment in concrete? It better look perfect, right? So those types of things, can I can I pick your brain related to the goals here in this section? Any thoughts related to those elements? Or did I just cover everything perfectly? This downtown plan is just immaculate.
I guess I'm not entirely sure, um, what you mean by place making, if you could kind of rephrase that.
So a place where people want to live, recreate and work. You know, what elements of of community make you want to be in that location, whether it's just a place to sit down like you were talking about, Ethan? Which we might not even have places to sit down, so nobody's ever gonna try to sit down, right? Uh, whether it is a place where events feel approachable, so things like shutting down the street or even just having, um, events that spill over into sidewalks in the public space. Having the right investments in lights or having buildings that are inviting or, as we've already touched on, not having to go into a parking ramp or walk past a vacant parking lot. Cause they're not very well lit. Those types of things are what we call place making in general. They all kind of come together and it's inherently nebulous and very broad and diverse. Um, and then, you know, the city directly contributes to some of those things in how we design streets, how we design sidewalks. Street trees and things like that. Um, so if I'm hearing from you that. Eighty-eight accessible ramps are not being particularly well designed for our community, then yeah, we should definitely be thinking about that. Uh, similarly, if I'm hearing that a business most people don't even know is downtown, is it because it doesn't feel like it's in downtown at that intersection? Is it because we haven't made the right connections for you? Uh, how can we generally just improve those types of place making elements?
I just wanna say, I think, uh. Peter's Beer Garden has really has the elements. Of that that of just being able to go downtown and just walk in there in that day or night, basically. And having this down and be in this outdoor space with other people and whatever. I don't know, that that is just feeling really right to me in terms of that kind of an atmosphere. But that really has kind of opened up something downtown that just really didn't. Quite exist as much, I mean, you know.
If I can help tease out some elements there, so Peter's Beer Garden wasn't vacant lot, right? And you're mentioning wanting to be there day or night, even if they're open or not open, going there for a meeting during the day. Versus something like, you know, the warehouse liquor building has been vacant for a number, for quite a long time, right? Has a large parking lot that could be converted into something. Or when we acquire a property and turn it into a parking lot, nobody's going to the parking lot for their picnic, right? So what are some elements that you maybe unconsciously or subconsciously are 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 feeling that make you approachable to you?
Well, it's, um. You know, I I think, um, if. The 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 management of the ownership, carbless, whatever, really has made. The, the, the management, the ownership, Carlos, whatever, really has made it clear that this is a community's, you know, space. Um and you know, it's very apparent when you go, when you're there or when you even, you know. The gate is open or, you know, signage is, you know, please help yourself, whatever it is. Um it doesn't feel like it's, it's off limits place, it just feels like it's. Even though it's, it's privately owned and that kind of thing, but it's kind of a nice mix of. Of, of being privately owned but yet open to the public um. You know, it's. Doesn't have full walls and a roof on it, I don't know, it's just a nice open space.
But to your point, people don't congregate down at the levy like that and feel that same buzz or whatever it is, but.
It's, yeah, because it is selling, it's, it's, there's a business there that's.
Right.
Has a lot of music and.
Right, 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 so um. So I think that there's a piece to that, there, you know, there's other things that are acceptable to it, like. You can go next door and get food or, you know, grab a, a drink if you want to, I mean, it's not just sitting at the levy at a table. By yourself or with a couple of other people, um there's just, it feels different.
Earlier we were talking about fall activities and we always go to Eppers in the fall because it's. Why not? They have music and they have a place to go get food and beverages and what if we have something? I've heard that it's really difficult to be a food truck owner in this town and I don't know the details of that, but like. Number one, how can we make that easier to attract more traveling vendors? So that we can have more of those activities that are unique or, you know, make you feel special and not just.
I'm glad you brought that up, I know it's, you know, a little bit of tangent, but I'd love to talk about that more later, cuz I think especially for a downtown area. You know, food trucks are a thing. And I think that's, you know, it's a small, specific thing, but I'd love to be able to focus on that.
Finally opened that up this year, I mean, before it was like you have to be on certain parts of Third Street or in a vacant parking lot, it was. Dare I say horrendous, I know this is being recorded, but it was a really bad pause.
If I can just add a little bit to uh the beer garden, cuz I think this is a great example um for so many reasons and one is that it was a baking pot. And you know, when I moved here, it was really up, um and it was, you know, it was even hard to walk across as a shortcut because of the soil. Now it's a grid space without doing, you know, obviously a lot, you know, not a whole new building. Um and I think that's great, um I also really like the um. Fact that it does feel like kind of a third space that people talk about. You don't have to go there and spend money, you don't have to go buy beer from the trailer there, you can go at different times, you can go and just sit, you can bring other food in. And it does make it feel more dynamic and open. Um and completely the signage is great, but also, you know, the social media presence is pretty good, I, you know, learn a lot about what's going on there through social media. Um and I like that there's a couple of different avenues for how to learn about events there.
Rahel, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, I think it's also really important to note with the garden, especially cuz I lived there during the construction and when it first opened, I lived right down the street. And I thought what they did really well was really making it known to the community that they were there. Even days before it opened, they were out letting everybody know like, hey, we're having our hope, opening night on this night. We also are hosting this on Friday nights and like making it very welcoming, I think that was what they did the best, especially with the college students. Because um I know that they were out letting people know like, hey, like I. We're having this day on that day or whatever it may be, but they did a really good job of like making their presence known and I think that was the most important thing.
A communication piece, once again, absolutely.
Yeah, they do great with programming, you know.
I think Carlos like physically shows up places and talks to you, I know I have flyers in my store, so. And we have a hundred people in the door every day and he's got signs that say, this is what's going on, first and third, Wednesday, every other, whatever his. Schedule is, so yeah, that communication is. Face to face even, old school fliering is still working.
Yes, every aspect, and maybe to him it feels like over communicating, but you know, to people, you know, outside it doesn't.
Even, I'm so like Island City Brewing, think about that too, does that feel like similar?
In summer?
In, in the summer.
Yeah, similar, um I mean, Peters to me is special because of those things that we talked about, and when you're at Island City, you're buying an Island City beer. Um you know, you're hanging out there, it does have some of those elements, especially that kind of easy come and go. Um which is another thing I like about the beer garden, you know, I can walk through it if I want to, people can come from the other, the, you know, the back entrance and the front. Um yeah, similar. Also, the beer garden is pretty, you know, like that.
Right, I was just gonna say that, that you're not sitting like in the parking lot dust.
And the aesthetics matter.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
And it looks more accessible too, right, like if you wanted food, you could get food very easily and then go sit down. Whereas at Island City, you really have to plan ahead and bring food, if you want.
Yeah, I think Island City was a little different when Jefferson's was active, you know, cuz then you could bring your stuff from Jefferson's into Island City.
And I think that all points to something that we talked about um in that Strongtown's lecture. And it's kind of that idea of thickening up, you know, is that. You know, part of the reason the beer gonna work so well is because it's right in the middle of everything, you know, it's right next to a coffee shop and a restaurant. You know, there's a lot going on there, you know, if things do, you know, build up and expand in downtown, there would be more areas that have those things next to them. Um and you know, eventually, there's something in Jefferson's, you know, around the corner, that could, you know, have a similar feel as well.
Yeah, it creates a reinforcing feedback loop where you have clustering of businesses and people wanna live next to those businesses and they wanna engage with them. And that'll lead to more businesses and it leads to more people and then we grow. Again, wonderful. Any last comments? We're now over time. Rahel, how are you doing?
Um, I just wanted to circle back to the food truck conversation because I think um with a few businesses. In downtown like Island City, they, when they host events, they'll um, they'll hire out a food truck to come out there. And I think that's like an important note to utilize, especially even in the summertime with Rubio's being out in downtown. Just right in the center on Third Street, like things like that I think are also like driving factors, like, oh, is there gonna be food there? Am I going to be able to walk there? Am I gonna do this or go to a park and then walk to Rubio, Rubio's after? Whatever food truck is out there, I think those are important aspects to also know, because I didn't really think about it until right now. Especially with my age group, like a lot of us do like just having easily accessible food to us.
Perfect, but with that.
I think Brian Allen uses food trucks quite a bit too, you know.
And they're not even in downtown and people find their way there, don't they? Shocking.
In a way to direct traffic, I think food trucks direct the traffic, so if they're parked at the levy, people are gonna know the levy's there. They're parked on one other side of the town, people are gonna know, you know.
Follow the traveling jeep from a neighboring city, you're gonna attract people who just wanna be where the food truck is.
People go to Flea Farm, we get cheese curds. The trunks of other people's cars, they know where they're gonna be and when they're gonna be there.
Alright, well, thank you all very much for your time, we're gonna go through the other chapter summary of the next meeting and talk about goals and objectives. And I will see you all on the twenty-seventh at three thirty P M, thank you.